So the city of Gunbarrel City will meet in a regular meeting in City Hall council chambers located at seventeen sixteen West Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P. M. If everyone will please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this night, these citizens, these board members, and all of our city employees and first responders. Please give us wisdom, patience, and clarity as we go about our city's business. In Jesus' name we always pray, amen.
Amen.
The pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to establish a quorum if I may. Roll call from my left, please.
Burns here.
Evans here.
Jacobs here.
Person here.
Foster here.
We have a quorum. Obviously, it is a packed house. It's going to be a very special night for all of us that cherish our first responders and their leaders. I'd first like to acknowledge some distinguished guests we have. Kate Weller, Planning and Zoning; Monica Damiano, Parks Board; our county attorney Clint Davis, thank you for being here; County Commissioner Scott Thule; Keith Bond with the EDC; Gilbert Shelby with Planning, Zoning, and Parks; Honorable Chief Stevens, Keith Stevens, our police, and members of our police and fire and our first responders who do tireless work, and we pray for their safety each and every day. I want to thank everyone for being here and taking time out of your day. This is, like I said, a very, very special evening. Citizens Communications, pursuant to Texas Government Code Section five-five-one-point-zero-zero-seven, members of the public may speak on any topic. Comments are limited to three minutes, and no action may be taken by the council. Any response from a member of the city council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information, a recitation of existing policy, or direction to staff for follow-up. We have one citizen's comment. Emeris Faith, if you could please step to the podium and give us your address, and please restate your name.
Emeris Faith, one-five-five Pine Bloom, Gunbarrel City. My dad is a third-generation Texan, a combat vet from the Korean War. Soon after his honorable discharge, Mom teased him about his gray hair. "If you'd seen what I saw," he said, "you'd have gray hair too." He worked all his life, when he had pneumonia, when the car wouldn't start, and he had to hitchhike fifteen miles, even when the Texas Rangers were playing balls. He paid taxes and lived a quiet life. In his golden years, he's unsteady on his feet, so when the neighbors' four chihuahuas swarmed and bit his feet, he couldn't get away. Later, different dogs swarmed and almost bowled him over, a potentially catastrophic fall. Both times, the dogs had been reported over and over. The city knew the dog owners and addresses. In both cases, the city told us there was nothing it could do. "You can take them to court," the city says, "and by the way, pay us forty dollars for your dogs first. That'll magically keep those dogs away from dear old Dad." It's like calling a plumber about a leak, and the plumber says, "Good luck with that. Where should I send my invoice?" Last Thursday, the city said it doesn't want to pick up dogs because it stresses the dogs out too much, and taking them to the shelter forever alters their personalities. The city's stance, then, is the feelings of a dog outweigh the well-being of our most vulnerable humans. It's transitioned from animal control, which is about human health and safety, to animal rescue, which is about a dog's feelings. Society begs to differ. The reason law enforcement will send in a canine to confront an armed suspect before they send in a man is because society understands a six-year-old boy is far more devastated when his daddy doesn't walk through the door than when a dog doesn't walk through. When a woman has a cat for eight years and then gives birth to a baby that's allergic to cats, society demands the cat leaves, not the baby. The city says, "Move on. Let the past be past." Well, I'm here tonight because the city hasn't moved on. It's the same pig in brighter lipstick. When the city affirms the life of a human being far exceeds that of an animal and takes action based on that principle, I'll move on. When the city produces data that backs up this is about public health and safety and not just a power and money grab, I'll move on. Public policy has to be rooted in data, not our lived experiences. That's why I've spent so much time on data and reasoning, because otherwise, we're building a house of cards, subject to the whims of the next best story. And by the way, if you haven't pulled back the curtain on animal control, animal rescue business, you have no idea what's really pushing these political agendas like this animal control ordinance. Thank you. And thank you, Chief, for your service.
Moving on, Consent Agenda. Six A, all matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Consider approving the following reports: February twentieth, twenty twenty-five, Special Meeting Minutes; February twenty, twenty twenty-five, Town Hall Minutes; February twenty-five, twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, Regular Meeting Minutes; and the EDC January Financials. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as is.
Second. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Take a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evans, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Person, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. New business. As we've stated, and it's very obvious how many people are here, the impact that this next gentleman has had on our city is, we can't put it into words, and I know that everyone in here has a story. Everyone has a real investment in their friendship with this gentleman. He has been a long, longtime friend, asset, and community leader, and at this time, we would like to recognize Joseph Lindeman.
So loud, so I don't think I need the microphone. I'm going to kick this off. I started, most of you know, I started in October of twenty twenty-three, October ninth, about the fifteenth or sixteenth, it was like Thursday, this man sticks me in his truck, and I proceeded to go up and down every single street in Gunbarrel City, through every business parking lot, through most empty lots, behind every business parking lot. I saw every trash can. I saw every rule that was broken. I saw every sign that wasn't supposed to be, and four hours later, I was about to wet my pants, I had heat. And so Joey left and dropped me back off at City Hall with a big smile on his face and said, "Thanks for going with me." And I was like, "Oh, my Lord, good that I got myself in." And every day since that day has been exactly like that. He is the guy we depend on for everything. He's assigned on the highway. He calls me when there's a problem at Lowe's. He works with every business owner in town to make sure that they have what they need, and if they don't, he stops by and helps them get it. It's our goal to fix it. If it's broken, Joey helps us make it work. And we're going to sincerely wish you a lot. We already, see, my already, I called three times this morning. So he can be replaced. He knows this town better than anybody probably that works here besides maybe my position. After twenty-two years, he is hanging up the fire helmet and going to retire and spend time with his family. And Gunbarrel has lost a true legend here. He has forgotten more than most of us will ever know about this town. So Joey, we love you. Senator, he felt like being here tonight, and he could not be. So this is from his office. Those are delicate congratulations to you, and a text flag that flew over the head.
I would present Joey with this. Joey was the actual first person that I ever met when I moved to Gunbarrel. It was infamous evening. I woke up to a kind of explosion noise, found out there was a fire on my dock. I was supposed to be the firefighter, but I went out there in my underwear, air heated me, tried to stomp it out, had a perfect burn on my foot, but I did have a hose that reached out there. I found out later that that was a very big deal in Joey's eyes. Joey came out there, make a long story short, they pretty much had a fire out by the time they got there. Again, I visited for a little bit, but about two hours later, knock on my door, I'm still on my door, so I'm panicking right there, and it fell down, all my boat, the weight of our boat was a mess. Joey shows up, says, "I'm a fire marshal. I'm here to help you." And I go, "Well, that was fast." I go, "Weren't you just here?" He goes, "Yeah, we didn't have a look at it." So we go down and look at it. Next thing I know, Joey makes a couple notes. Next thing I know, he's pulling the I-beams off the boat. He's tearing the cover off the boat. He asks me what my starter code is. Next thing I know, he starts the boat, he pulls it out and slips, he's going down the canal, told me, "Go get my trailer, we're going to load it up." And I'm going, "What are you doing?" He goes, "Well, you can't get it fixed in here." So I go run through the house, probably put some clothes on, that could just probably do it the same. And, "Ma'am, my bike, where are you going?" I go, "Fire marshal's taking the boat, man, we gotta go load the boat." She goes, "The boat's crushed in the..." I go, "Well, nobody told Joey that he's having a bad time." And that's the kind of person that Joe, that Joseph Lindeman is. He's not just a fireman. He's not just a leader of men and women. He's not just a great husband, a great father, but he is a true blessing and an asset to a city that will... There will be great fire chiefs and fire marshals and things like that that will come after this, but then we'll have urgency able to replace the tireless efforts and the stamping of the town. In commemoration of all that, the city of Gunbarrel City would like to have Fire Chief Joseph Lindeman with this accent.
Ask for anything? No? Any of you?
No.
Jason, you guys want to say anything? No, Jason.
Jason, say something.
Yeah, Jason. Yeah, Jason. Poor Jason.
All previous councils, mayors, city managers, the homeowners, our property, our department, companies, and thank you, the citizens. Scott, really, thank you. All I've got to say, I'm going to go lay my head down. I don't believe those.
(Laughter). And I hope I knew we did. I hold it back. This starts and it stops.
Seven B, Proclamation, Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, April twenty twenty-five. Janet, do we have anyone to speak on this?
(Inaudible).
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on there? Everyone gets to speak tonight.
That was a tough act to follow, though.
So, thank you, Council, for having us. I'm Leslie Saunders. I'm the chief executive officer at the Henderson County Help Center and Maggie's House Child Advocacy Center. And so, April is Child Abuse Awareness Month, so we wanted to bring a proclamation to you regarding child abuse and neglect. And so, the proclamation reads, "Whereas children are Henderson County's next generation of leaders and our brightest rays of hope for the future, child abuse and neglect not only directly harm children, but also increase the likelihood of long-term physical and mental health problems, alcohol and substance abuse, criminal behavior, and poverty. Child maltreatment is a community problem, and finding solution depends on the involvement among people throughout the community. It is a time to focus on ways not only to protect children, but to prevent abuse from occurring, and this is our opportunity to make a difference in young lives. Whereas, in the fiscal year of twenty twenty-four, the state of Texas completed two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-six investigations of child abuse and neglect. Henderson County numbers for twenty twenty-four are: seven-hundred-and-two investigations from Child Protective Services Investigations; three-hundred-and-forty-seven served with a court-appointed special advocate or CASA of Trinity Valley; four-hundred-and-thirteen received services at Maggie's House Child Advocacy Center. Whereas, communities must make an effort to promote programs that benefit children and families across Gunbarrel City, and whereas, affected child abuse prevention programs success because of partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and whereas, everyone in Gunbarrel City should become more aware of child abuse prevention and consider helping parents raise their children in a safe, nurturing environment. Now, therefore, I, Brian Kroll, mayor, and the council members, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-five to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in Gunbarrel City, and urge the citizens to work together to help reduce child abuse and neglect significantly throughout the years to come. Approved and adopted by Gunbarrel City Council on this day, the twenty-fifth day of March twenty twenty-five."
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very proud of that, and thank you for all you do. Seven C, we'll now have a presentation of quarterly department reports, including fire, streets, and park maintenance. Our sponsor of this agenda item will be none other than our city manager, Dr. Smith.
So tonight, we have the fire department report, and as I notified council, Colby McBride will be presenting that report. Colby is serving as our interim fire chief. So he is filling the gap for Mr. Lindeman while we recruit and hire our next fire chief. Colby, would you like to come up to the podium?
On the screen, we have a pie chart showing our calls for December of twenty-four. It's going to be the first month of the quarter, finishing out our year. So on our chart, we're sitting at pretty much average for a twenty-four-month period for our fires that we're going to respond to. About a half a point down on a number of alarms for fires. The medical calls in December of twenty-four was about six percent increase for our yearly average. When you roll over to January, the medical calls are going to run about four percent less than our yearly average in January, and our fire calls for the month of January dropped about three percent of our yearly average. February, we went up on our emergency calls, twelve percent responding medical car wrecks. The fire calls went up a total of two percent for the month of February. So sitting in that quarter, we're going to be sitting pretty close to an annual average of last year on our fires, about a quarter percent less, but pretty close to the average of last year. Medical calls have gone up this year about seven-point-five percent in this first quarter. So summer months come, and then, you know, fluctuates up and down a little bit on our fires and med, but that's where we're at with it. Any questions?
Questions for staff?
Have we responded to any grass fires locally?
We have had a couple of small grass fires. We haven't had nothing major, nothing more than an acre, two acres tops in the city. Any other?
Or the questions? None, thank you.
Thanks.
Colby, I appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Next, we'll have Street and Park Department Quarterly Update. Other than our street department's director, Michael Howell. No cane.
No limp, no nothing.
No cane, no limp, no nothing.
That's amazing.
Hundred percent.
Great.
As you can see, our chart up here, February was a little bit a low month for us because of the cold weather and all the down temperatures that we had, so I'm working on our street department special projects, okay? If you'll... We've been working on repairing and preparing to get ready for spring and summer mowing with all our other projects that are going on, on the streets and the ditching and everything. Our asphalt street repair, we reconstructed and paved about fourteen-hundred-and-fifty-foot of Box Road coming from the Spanish Shore subdivision up to Karen Street, I believe it is, that winds off of there. We've done about one-tenth mile of culverts in lane miles. Our longleaf drainage project, which is now complete and finalized, it looks wonderful. You'll see some video, I mean, some pictures that I have of it. The ditch maintenance, we've done about three-hundred-and-fifteen linear feet. Now that the temperature has warmed up, we're going to do a few thousand feet of ditching. So we'll be moving all through the neighborhoods, different neighborhoods, and doing some ditching and trying to move some of this water and get it ready for the rainy season coming up in April and May. Our special event assistance that we had, I have to hand it to Paul Lyons, my lead man. He's been prepping the Gunbarrel City Speedway for the twenty-twenty-five lawnmower races, and he's done a great job. I understand that they had a great, great first race this month. There was, the stands were packed full, so... But I wasn't there because I was taking my grandkids camping, so it was something I had to do. Our sign maintenance, we've replaced eight damaged signs citywide so far. We haven't heard of anything else, haven't had any calls. And our code enforcement partnership, we partnered up with code enforcement, police department, and cleaned the area behind loads of debris and hazardous material from that camp that they had back there. And the guys put in a lot of hours over there. I think we had ninety-six hours of labor time over there in that area for this particular project. So I'm glad we got that done, and everything looks great. And if you'll see the community center, what I had for February, you can see on the lower right-hand side over there, when I took this in February, they just had the slab poured for everything over there. Everything but the sidewalks were poured. They're going to pour the sidewalks last, but now, if you happen to drive by there, take a look at it, you'll see a big skeleton up there, and it looks wonderful, and it's going to be great. So in the upper-left-hand corner, you'll see the slow sign up there. That was part of the paving that was going on on Box Road. And in the middle two, the two on the right on the top, were the longleaf drainage project for Tamarack, and it's working wonderful. Everybody is happy about it. There is some people that want us to go farther, but it takes a lot of money. This costs over three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars for the city to get a grant to do this, but we'll work on it. We won't get chosen this year for a grant. They'll skip us usually, and then a year later, we'll try it again. But there is the homeless camp that we cleaned out, and that's what I have for you. Does anyone have any questions or anything? I have parks also on here. My park hours, I have four guys working parks, and the snapshot is they got two full-time, two part-time employees to take care of all the twenty amenities in the park. They do daily trash pickup, clean restrooms, and repair amenities when it's needed. They're mowing the sixty acres, plus City Hall EMS, the police department, dog kennels, and the island on one-ninety-eight. And they've installed new directional signs for each hole on the Frisbee Golf Course. If you've been out there, the Frisbee Golf Course looks great with the signs. And also, for you pickleball players, the pickleball court has been lined with four new courts and been painted, so there's four courts out there. We have nets and everything to be able to play pickleball out there if you need it. So all you have to do is check with City Hall, find out the code, and we'll get you set up to play pickleball. The special projects should have the volleyball court up and running by, hopefully, in another week, the first of April. That's our plan. We have new sand coming in this week for it, and it'll be all set up. All the water fountains in the park area are working now, so we got all the parks we needed. I think there was two fountains we were waiting on parks, and they came in, so... And also, if you'll take a look at the ball fields, the ball fields look really nice, and they're ready to play this summer, so... You can see the pictures up here of the golf course and the pickleball court, and also the ball fields, so everything looks great. Everything's moving along this summer. It's going to look really great, and people are going to have a good time at the park this year.
Michael, I'd like to say, I was announcing the lawnmower race, and, you know, that was the track of the year, and there was forty different racers there this year, and every one of them, and they were from all over everywhere.
Yes.
They couldn't say enough good things about the area, the track, and I also want to give a big shout-out to Monica Damiano and her leadership. What an incredible job, the whole parks. I know Mr. Shelby's been sitting on that also with some other members, but your leadership has been greatly appreciated, and the fruits of the labor are right there on the screen for us all to see, and I think we've all always said this, this is one of our greatest assets in the city.
Yes, it is.
And so, kudos to everyone. Your staff does an amazing job. Paul's an incredible worker and incredible employee and asset to the city, but again, thank you, Ms. Damiano, for all of your leadership, too. I think that the park is something that really shines now, we can all really be proud of.
We do think with the help of the park board and everyone, so we want to thank everyone that has helped us out up there. It looks really nice. Can you make any other questions?
Yes, sir.
What's the status of our walking trail bids?
Our walking trail bids, I have three of them. They're to pave it in concrete, okay? It's over a hundred thousand dollars, okay? It's right at an eighth of a mile. To pave it in asphalt, it's going to be over forty thousand dollars each, it's the two bids that I have. Now, we're trying something else, different now. I have a lot of reclaimed asphalt up there that we got from the state, okay? And I got a formula from someone that said, "Hey, try this first." So I'm going to take some of that reclaimed asphalt and put it down in one area and mix some Portland cement with it, and then let it sit for a while, and then we're going to see how it packs in, so we may be able to do it just on the cost of the Portland cement.
That would be good.
If this works out, so keep an eye out for that project, okay?
Well, I don't exercise, but I was just asking about it.
Yeah.
Further questions for staff? Mr. Al, thank you very much, everything you do.
Thanks, Mike.
Seven D, consider and take action to receive an annual report as required by Senate Bill ten seventy-four in regard to racial profiling. Our sponsor on this will be our police chief, Keith Stevens.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Thank you for your time. We're required to do a full racial profiling report every year, and the Gunbarrel City Police Department has clearly defined acts that constitute racial profiling. We have instituted policies and procedures to make sure our officers are abiding by all state and federal laws related to that. With our report, there was four-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-one traffic stops that were reported this year. Out of that, twenty-six-hundred-and-seventy-two were moving violation, were traffic violations, moving violations. Out of those violations, there were a hundred-and-thirty-four of those were searched involved with that. Sixteen of those were consent. Thirteen of those contraband were found. Probable cause searches were fifty-two. Inventory searches were forty-four. 52, inventory searches were 44, searches incident to arrest were nine. Contraband, it was discovered, was discovered out of 70 of those searches. Zero complaints related to racial profiling. Now, we have had complaints through traffic stops, but this is strictly 100% racial profiling. Has nothing to do with other complaints that have come in due to traffic stops. Just wanted to make sure y'all understand that. So as far as the racial profiling report goes, there was zero complaints. Any questions?
Questions for staff?
I'd just like to thank the Police Department for being more vigilant on the streets. Hires and better car show. I think the numbers here are up significantly from previous years, and some people I know don't like that you can't drive 80 down this road, but that's with a lot of traffic here that can't be done. And I think the diligence that you all have put forward is showing, and I'd like to really recognize the Police Department for your hard work in that area.
Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you. Great job as always.
Appreciate you.
You're the best. 7E, consider and take op, action to approve ordinance number O-2025-004 adopting purchasing policies by and through a purchasing manual. Our sponsor on this item will be, other than our City Manager, Dr. Smith, I will read the ordinance into the record. Ordinance number O-2025-004, an ordinance of the City Council for the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas, adopting purchasing policies by and through a purchasing manual, providing a severability clause, providing a repealer clause, and providing an effective date. Dr. Smith?
So we have spent since late fall updating this policy. City of Gunbarrel had a 2014 purchasing policy, and with the help of our City Treasurer, Mickey Rainey, who y'all know is sitting in the back corner, begging me not to make her get up and talk, she, she, she and I went through this, we updated it. There is a very strict Texas purchasing law, and so we want to make sure that our policy follows suit with that. It is best practice to update them about every 10 years, so it was time. This is the one financial policy that has to be approved through an ordinance, which is why this one is a little different than the other two that we will talk about tonight. But this is an updated policy which will, in the end of the day, help our City Treasurer manage projects and purchasing a little bit easier. We'll do staff training on it, we'll roll that out. All the department heads have reviewed it, so we'll get it rolled out to all the staff so everybody's in compliance.
Discussion or questions? Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance number O-2025-004 adopting purchasing policies by and through a purchasing manual.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Evan, second.
I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. I'll have a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evan, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. 7F, consider and take action to approve the 2024 Gunbarrel City Investment Policy. Again, our sponsor on this, our City Manager, Dr. Smith.
So another policy that is really important and best practice for a city to have, this ensures how we spend and invest public funds. And so the policy that was attached in your packet that we have had a work session on, again, here, we started talking about these in late fall, really look at how our investments of Gunbarrel City governed. And those are all approved by council, and so this, this just outlines for staff how we bring it to you and outlines for council and explains how that all comes together.
Questions and discussion?
The policy you have in your packet says March of 2024. It should be March of 2025.
If none, do I have a motion?
I move that we take action to approve the 2025 Gunbarrel City Investment Policy.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Evan, second.
I have a motion and a second. If no further discussion, vote from my right, please.
Foster.
Foster, yes.
Burson, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Evan, yes.
Burns, yes.
Motion passes. 7G, consider and take action to approve the 2024 Gunbarrel City Financial Policy. Again, our sponsor on this will be our City Manager, Dr. Smith.
And finally, this is the third part of those policies and really getting the necessary policies in line for, not that there's been any question about proper management, but this really, for every council going forward, sets exactly what the expectations are as we do budget and as we do all of those things. Talks about the type of accounting we use, our, our budget policy is a little more detailed than what's in the charter of the ordinances, budgetary control, talks about the different types of funds and fund structure that Gunbarrel City has, what are unrestricted funds, what are restricted funds, what your fund balance policies are. Some of you heard me talking a lot about that at our budget meeting, our mid-year budget meeting, our debt policies, our revenue policies, our capital improvement program policies, briefly hits on procurement policies, which we just talked about in a, in a purchasing policy manual, and then our grant policy, clearly outlines who manages what in that project. So a lot of work has gone into this from our City Treasurer to make sure these are ready to be approved tonight by council, and we're super excited, so.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. If no further discussion, do I have a motion?
I move that we take action to approve the 2025 Gunbarrel City Financial Policy.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second. Evan, second.
I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Vote from my right, please.
Foster, yes.
Burson, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Evan, yes.
Burns, yes.
Motion passes. 7H, consider and take action to approve a service agreement with B. Weis Entertainment Group, LLC in an amount not to exceed $151,102.75 for July Fest 2025. Again, our sponsor on this will be our City Manager, Dr. Smith.
This is our annual contract. You saw the same, very similar contract last year. B. Weis Entertainment Group partners with the City of Gunbarrel. As you have heard me say over and over, we have a lean and mean staff, but that means when an event comes up, we don't have near the manpower we need to pull off something like July Fest. So this contract includes stage, sound, and lights, the stage that they set up down at the park, all the sound, all the lighting. It's all the event personnel that is really the backstage operation personnel, all the bodies you see scouring around behind the scenes. And at the front gate, they help us sell tickets, they hand out tickets, they do check-ins at the gate, the musical acts, which are the headliner and the opener, and we are working diligently right now. Brooke is working diligently to be able to release those names. We're just working with the promoter to be able to do that. And then all of the operation assistants that comes along with it, they come in and set up the fencing, both all the way around the site and along the stage, the bicycle barricades, that's what that's called, along the stage. They do the security behind the stage. At some of the gates, our police force is there in full force, but they do more of the crowd control type stuff, and this, this third-party company takes care of that. Portable restrooms, the tickets, the ticket sales. Every band comes with a rider, and that's all the things you have to do for them. So the rider and the buyouts, they help us manage those. They also do marketing services for our ticket sales and then the production management of the show itself to make sure, and that's a, that's a full-time job the day of the event, to make sure everything happens when it is supposed to happen, how it is supposed to happen. So we have this contract. Brad Weis has done this for us for a number of years. I know last year, you guys saw the contract, very similar. He makes sure that this is a very smooth transition and our staff gets exactly, and our public gets a knockout show, so it's a great contract for us.
I will second that. It was a great, great show last year. Any further discussion for staff?
There will be fireworks.
There will be fireworks this year, yes, sir. We're in the process of working on that. You will probably see that. We're, we're getting bids right now for fireworks. We are venturing off a little bit from the drone show. It's a little hard to find drones right now after the situation that happened at that event up north, I think, yes. And so we are going to do fireworks this year, and we're in the process of putting together the budget and the show for that, and Brooke is working on getting all the bids for that.
And if we're in a drought or a dry spell, do we have a backup plan?
We're going to water everything.
In an event like this...
Mr. McBride on the back row is going to spray everything with water.
Fire Department.
With an event like this, are there any areas where the city recoups any of this money, and how do we do it, and how much?
We do through ticket sales. So as, as you all know, we have sponsors, but we also do ticket sales. We are changing up a little bit what we're going to do this year, so we're partnering with a radio station, and we're going to have, Derek Days has a big, April's laughing because I said dairy days for a few weeks. Derek Days, of Corsicana, has a big Battle of the Bands that one of the local radio stations sponsors, and so we're going to be able to have the main, the winner of the Battle of the Bands, and then even a second artist that has won before, so we're going to have a little longer. But a lot of the recoup we get is mainly through ticket sales, and this is part of what we spend our hotel motel funding on, so that we have very limited resources on what we can spend that on. That's all the, the hotel motel tax from our hotels and from our short-term rentals, and so this is really what, what all of those funds go to, and then we recoup some of it through ticket sales. That was a long explanation.
Further discussion? Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the service agreement with B. Weis Entertainment Group, LLC in an amount not to exceed 100, 151, yes, I can read numbers, 150, 51,102.75 for July Fest 2025.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Burns, second.
If no further discussion, vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evan, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. Moving on now to planning and zoning. I will now open a public hearing on a request to replat eight lots, lots 73, 74, 77, 78, 81, 82, 85, and 86 in the Siesta Shores subdivision, Section 1, Block F in the B Metro survey, A-483 owned by Francisco Gutierrez and Lorena Cardenas Garcia into a single lot of Lot 73-R. Is there anyone to speak at this time? If not, I will now close the public hearing. 8B, consider and take action on a request to replat eight lots, lots 73, 74, 77, 78, 81, 82, 85, and 86 in the Siesta Shores subdivision, Section 1, Block F in the B Metro survey, A-483 owned by Francisco Gutierrez and Lorena Cardenas Garcia into one single lot, Lot 73-R. Our sponsor on this item will be, again, our City Manager, Dr. Smith.
Tonight, I am serving as your substitute city planner. Some of you may know Brittany Anderson's daughter made state in archery, and she shot tonight at 6 o'clock, so I just got a picture of a big smiling face. So she shoots Bullseye today and 3D tomorrow, and so she was very excited, and Mama couldn't miss out on that. So I'm doing her presentation tonight. So the timeline for this project, the public hearing notice was sent to the paper on February the 13th. We mailed letters to property owners within 200 feet of the property on February 17th. P&amp;Z and City Council public hearing, public hearing notice was published in the paper at least 15 days prior to the City Council meeting, which is what was required. On March the 10th, at the P&amp;Z meeting, they gave approval to move this forward to City Council, and then today is the regular City Council meeting. The 200-foot boundary for these properties are there where you see, you can already see, and this is a great visual, because you can see there's two other areas where we've already, they have already replatted several lots into a larger lot between Carla and Ben Lacy. This is Siesta Shores, this is the survey. They are taking eight lots, I believe, and combining them into one lot. It is in the Siesta Shores subdivision, which is in Gunbarrel City limit. This is the replat, a closer version of that survey. As you all know, Brittany would have a very scripted presentation. I don't have Brittany's script, so we're winging it tonight. These are, it is zoned R6C, and these are the requirements, the minimum lot area is 5,000 square foot, the build line at the lot width, the lot width at the build line is 50 feet, the minimum lot depth is 100 feet, and the minimum yard setbacks are 25 on the front, interior five feet, side street eight, and rear seven and a half feet, and the minimum building floor space of principal structures here are 800 square foot. They can absolutely exceed this, but they cannot go smaller than that. Next slide, please, Janet. And I believe Mr. Gutierrez is here. If you all have questions, he is here to answer those, but this is very similar to the last replat we did, but instead of taking one big lot and replating it into several smaller, they are replating several smaller lots into one larger. And as I said, you saw that on the, on the 200-foot boundary, there are several other in that area that have done this as well.
Questions for staff?
Could we ask the gentleman to maybe explain to us a little bit why you're doing this? We cannot ask that?
Absolutely. Can you, can you go to the podium, please?
Please.
Sure. Sorry.
Okay.
Good evening, all. My name is Jocelyn Tovar. I am Mr. Gutierrez's daughter. The reason why we're replating is we unfortunately came to an issue when we were trying to do a cleanup line for our property. We discovered that it was a total of, I believe, four addresses, and this, the Dallas, not, sorry, not the Dallas, the water utilities do require one address for us to pretty much, you know, look into the sewage, the cleaning up line. And so this is when we discovered the replat process. So we have decided to replat all eight, a lot into one, just, you know, for more effectiveness for the water utilities. We do plan to recite here in the future, so we're just trying to make everything, you know, in order. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further questions, discussion? If none, I'll ask for a motion.
I move that we take action on a request to replat eight lots, 73, 74, 77, 78, 81, 82, 85, and 86 in the Siesta Shores subdivision, Section 1, Block F in the B Metro survey, A-483 owned by Mr. Gutierrez and others into a single lot, 73R.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Evan, second.
If no further discussion, I'll take a vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evan, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for your attendance. This meeting is now adjourned.
I think that's the quickest meeting yet.
It's been a while since we've had one that fast.